Great, very good. Let's get started. We'll call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the August 12th meeting. Is there any additions, corrections, or modifications to the minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Sweet Dante has made a motion. Is there a second? All second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Let's move on to new business. Item A, proposed site development plan, East Middle School redevelopment. Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay, great. So tonight we're here to talk about the East Middle School redevelopment plan. And so the purpose of the plan is to raise the current middle school and then to replace it with a new eighty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-one square foot new middle school. So I apologize, but okay. In case there's anyone who does not know where East Middle School is, so just wanted to show you, it's off of Longwell Avenue. And here is a picture of the front. This is a historic school and it has been around in our community for quite some time. It's gone through several iterations from what we understand from the Board of Education. And so now it's time for it to get a complete overhaul. Here is the site plan. So the right here is where the current school is. So what's going to happen is just like they did in Mount Airy Middle, in case anyone is familiar there, they're going to build the school on the fields and then they're going to get to demo the current school so that it doesn't interrupt the students going to school at all. The second phase, once they do that, also includes this bus loop that's here as well as the students. This is off of North Street, North Street. Sorry, North Street's over here, Tuck Road and Longwell. So just to give you some bearings of what we're talking about. Oh, hold on. Here's the landscaping plan. One of the things that we think that will just be outstanding for this plan is all of the landscaping and that's going to be brought with this project. Right now, along Key Street, there really, there is no landscaping at all. The current building comes pretty much essentially right up to it. So this is going to add all the buffering here as well as along Tuck Road. All, I'm sorry, this interior road here off of Tuck Road is going to add all the additional buffering from those folks that are currently back up to the school. So it's going to be kind of like a double layer of landscaping for them as a buffer. You'll see that in your staff report, there were some landscape modifications that were requested. And that was because just based on the topography, there were certain things that could not be met and the zoning administrator did go ahead and approve those prior to our meeting tonight. This here is the proposed elevation. So here along, so this, this is the side that would be fronting Key Street. Over here would be the area that would be fronting on Tuck and Longwell. And this is the new bus loop that would be going in front. And I apologize, I think you can see my mouse, but just in case. So the way that we've been moving forward with our staff reports is that we just really want to highlight the outstanding issues that have arisen throughout the development plan process. So with this, there are three major projects or three major things that we wanted to bring to your attention to talk about conditions for approval of the site plan. Water has been tentatively allocated, so we don't really have to talk about that. And otherwise, it doesn't meet our zoning ordinance requirements. Number one is the off-site roadway improvements to North Street. One of the things that's required by our code is that all of the roads are brought up to city standards. And one of the things that we noticed in this plan is that North Street, as it goes kind of from Willis up into that curve, is not as wide as the rest of where North Street meets center. So we're talking about the idea of widening that to make the road just entirely the same width all around. One of the things that we discussed with the Board of Education is that they have a special relationship with Carroll County Government. And that is that the Board of Education is not responsible for any off-site improvement work. The Carroll County Government is who does that on their behalf. Currently, there is no plan or this project's not in their capital improvement program. So, but we still wanted to bring it to your attention. One of the things that we are asking is that Carroll County Government and the Board of Education continue to have conversations about this and that they talk about in the future, adding this to a future CIP so that this project can be done. But we understand that that's not something that'll happen necessarily with this go around, but in the future. Number two is a consolidation plan. It's actually a consolidation and abandonment plan. And the reason for that being is that if you look at the current plan and how the property is, there's all sorts of different properties that are combined together. They're actually not combined, they're all individual. And so the idea is to put it into one parcel for the school. When you look at it, in addition to that, there are roads. Future roadways that have been dedicated, there are pieces of roads. It's not a full road or anything, but they have been dedicated throughout time. And the idea is that we would take this plat to the mayor and common council for the abandonment portion of it. These are roads that the city no longer has, or is not planning on pursuing in any way. So this is just something that we want to have accomplished before use and occupancy for the school is complete. Um, the other thing that we want to talk to you about that we were asking as a condition is the redesign of the elevations. The elevation on the left-hand side is what came forward from stakeholders' meetings. This is what was originally talked about. And there was a lot of consensus from all of the group members about the way that this school looked. Basically, since, and this was all laid out in your staff report as well, but because of budget cuts, it went from the version on the left-hand side to the version of the right-hand side. And it's still a really great middle school. We're still very excited about it. It does take in different portions of our downtown. But there's two pieces in particular that has been changed and that we wanted to bring to your attention. One of the things is the canopy for the students to stand under for any type of inclement weather or even if it's just really so hot and sunny outside. This was something that had the buy-in from a lot of the stakeholders as well as the designer. And we're asking, well, let me just finish. This here also, the change you can see in the roof line here. Looking at doing, asking them to put in the future, some sort of parapet wall on the front portion here, the part that's facing Key Street to change the elevations of the building, just so that it's not just a flat roof, so that we have. That's one of the things in our design preference manual that talks about varying roof lines and things along that nature. We're asking this to be a future phase. It's something that we understand it can't happen now. It's not budgeted anywhere. We're asking that it be a condition to be put on the plan, however, so that we can show it as something that's going to happen in the future. But like I said, understanding that it's not going to happen when the school opens or anytime. So with that, I know I went fast and talked quickly, but here are our recommendations. So our recommendation is that the commission does consider the conditional approval of this proposed site plan with the following conditions. Number one, that they address all of the city comments. There are some comments that our engineer has reviewed and they just recently submitted comments. So there are a few things that they just wanted them to take a look at and that would be addressed prior to Mylar. But that's not anything of any, something that this commission has to worry about. It's things like lines underground and things like that. Number two, that the Board of Education of Carroll County requests that Carroll, that the Carroll County Government talk about adding that widening of the road to a six-year capital improvement plan or program. Number three, that that recordation of the abandonment plat, consolidation plat, all happened prior to the use and occupancy for this school. Also to provide an additional phase of the project to include the installation of that canopy that I discussed. And also to update the redesign of the East Middle School elevations to include not only that canopy, but also some sort of parapet wall to change up the elevations. That, that's everything that I have. I do know that there are several people from the Board of Education and the design firm that's here. If there's anybody who would like to share or if you guys have any additional questions.
I have a question for you. So correct me if I'm wrong. I think the goal is to, you know, I remember hearing about the issue with the, when the budgets came in, they were over budget and hence why the redesign. And we're trying to get this approved and get this underway. It's important for the community. But we also had all these meetings that took place before I was involved here. And so we're, we're trying to go ahead and get the approval done so they can move forward, but also address some of the changes in a way that's, you know, accomplishes things in the long term, but addresses some of the concerns about the changes. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. It's not our intention to hold up the project at all from, from the city's perspective. That's why we're ready to move forward with a conditional approval. And as you can see, the majority of the things that we're requesting, other than the few things that perhaps our engineer might ask for prior to this Mylar set, are all things in the future that we can address at a later time.
Thank you.
Anyone, I guess my question for the applicants, is there any issues with what the city staff has proposed here as far as their conditions? Are you in agreement with them? Or not in agreement with these conditions and things that they've asked for?
I can, I can speak for the, for our group. I'm Ray Prokop. I'm the Director of Facilities Management for the school system. With us tonight is Bill Kane. He's our facilities planner. He's been working with the, with your planning department quite closely in the development of the, of the, what you see before you this evening. Also Jim Marx, he's our supervisor of construction and we have, we do have representatives from Hord Copeland-Mock, the architects, and also Dustin Construction, who is our construction manager. So yeah, the, I guess, trying to sort of bring everybody to where we are, just as a little, a little background. The, you know, we did receive when we bid in June, they were, they exceeded our allowed budget. So there was just a comment that earlier that there was a budget cut. There was no budget cut. Unfortunately, the market conditions are such that it really, and well, it really knocked our socks off. Frankly, this was, you know, it was a bit of a surprise. I think anybody that involved in construction knows what's going on now, but for us, it was a little bit of a surprise just how, just how, how much the conditions affected our budget, our established budget. And that did force us to go back and to reconsider our design. Our, the difference we were looking at was about thirteen million dollar change. That's an awful, awful lot of money to try to pull out of a project at this stage. But our main criteria was that we weren't going to affect the instructional integrity of the building. So the, so the planning committee that had been working on the, working on designing the school, you know, their, their main interest was making sure that the middle school served today and forty years into the future, hopefully. And, and that was our, you know, that was our main criteria. Don't affect that, but we knew we were going to have to make some architectural changes and some engineering changes. The biggest issue we came up against, it's again, it's not a big secret out there in the industry, is steel. And so that's why you see changes to the roof. That's all steel. It's all, has to do with structural issues, structural members and whatnot. Also the canopies, all steel and lots of footings and things like that. So that's what we targeted, but that wasn't the beginning and the end of it. There were some hundred twenty or so engineering and architectural items that we found that we were able to probably cut about five and a half million dollars off of this thirteen million dollar deficit that we still have, you know, almost six, well, a little more than a five million dollar issue that the board still has to deal with, with the, with the Board of County Commissioners. We are scheduled to have a joint meeting on September twenty-third to discuss this, this issue. Hopefully, we'll be able to resolve that. The board did approve the design as you see it with those changes. Specifically, we talked about the roof line. Specifically, we talked about the canopies and whatnot. Still adhering to the criteria that we don't affect the instructional integrity of what was originally designed and we were able to accomplish that. So that's kind of where we stand. We're hoping to be able to get a, our grading permit in October. It's critical for us not to get too much further into the, into the fall to be able to take advantage of the the weather for grading purposes and to do our site work. That's to keep us on track to open on time.
And Ray, your bids are only good for so long. Is that not correct? I think I remember hearing that somewhere.
Yes, and that's, that's correct. And luckily, luckily, our staff had the foresight to extend those bid, those bid times. Because what we're seeing in the industry now is a lot of concern on the contractor's parts with fluctuating prices and whatnot. So luckily, we have that and we do have, we do have our contracts, you know. We do have them under, under, you know, signed, executed, but, but yeah, if there was, if, if we were to delay or push the project and we'd be in trouble because a delay for it, for us at this point with the material deliveries that we're seeing is going to be a year's delay. There, there won't be any way to recover. So yeah, we are, we're under the gun a bit. There's, there's no doubt about it. And this, the budget end of it is just one piece, right? We got three pieces of construction, budget, schedule, and quality. And two of the three are, you know, are bearing down on us. All that, to kind of put it out there, that, you know, I, I don't think, you know, the first, the first condition isn't, isn't a problem. We certainly can, you know, entertain, have a conversation, you know, a discussion with Carroll County Government to, to look at, to look at North Street, to see how that works into their plans for, for what, for their, for their capital plans. There's, there should be no issue at all with consolidation of the, of the plat. We're actually working on that. I think Bill's working on that as, you know, right now to do exactly what's being asked for. But the two, the four and five are a little bit more difficult to, to address. And certainly I can't do that tonight. Our board would have to agree to consider anything, to consider these two because they, they, they explicitly, they, they agreed to, they approved the documents as you see them. For them to reverse that and to add the cost, the additional cost, that, that would have to be in their laps. It's not something we can, we can agree to. The concern, I suppose the biggest concern we have is the, is the canopies. We believe we could probably do, our architect believes that we could probably do some elevation changes, materials. He proposed a few ideas today that might satisfy the requirement for number five and may not be too much of an issue in terms of added cost. We have to see what that looks like and whether that would be agreeable to the commission. Number four is a bit more difficult because we're talking there hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably upwards of a half a million to be able to put those canopies in. As I said, we're, those are, those are structural elements. They're, they're not a, an inexpensive take because they were taken as a, as a cost reduction. And we were looking for the big numbers and those canopies are the big numbers. There, there, there's something that's desired, but it's certainly not something we have throughout the school system. Most of our buildings don't have canopies to the extent that we were showing. We were hoping, we were crossing our fingers. But, but the market is just not, it's just not favorable for them. So that, that one's a bit more difficult and especially trying to commit to any sort of phasing where we do an additional, I guess, additional design and then have to come back to a project that we completed, which is, I'm assuming that's what's meant by a separate phase. And then to begin to tear it up and to put the footings in and to build the canopies. That, that's, that's, that's going to be a tough one for us to handle. So, you know, we would like to get every, we certainly would, you know, desire to have approval this evening. We want to do what we can do to, to, to accomplish that. But that's, that's going to be a big one to, to, to consider. And I say, as I say, the board's going to have to do that because these were, you know, the canopies were a specific item that they understood was going to be taken out of the project. I know, I know I said a lot.
Okay. Questions, comments from anyone on the commission?
Correct me if I'm wrong, from a staff standpoint. I think the biggest concern is, and again, I wasn't there for all the history of this, but there was a lot of meetings, I'm assuming as this project was being developed. And Andrea, I'm assuming that we're a little bit concerned that, that, you know, we're, you know, the planning commission is going to be approving something that's kind of different than what, you know, many in the community thought they were getting. Is that the concern? Or what is the concern at this point in time?
Um, excuse me, I think that we looked at this plan the way that we would look at all site plans for any developer and anything like that. And so if at the last moment we were receiving something else, we would be bringing both things before the planning commission, just so the planning commission can understand that there have been changes that have occurred. We do understand the, exactly what was just said about the cost. We wanted just to bring this up because this was something that was discussed in, in the group. So that was something that was, that was brought up, but just wanted to, just wanted to reiterate the fact that this is, it wasn't the city's intention to hold up this project moving forward to go, you know, to get the grading permit in October. That was why it was talked about, you know, at a later time, but wanted to leave this in the laps of the, of the planning commission.
Yeah, and
My comment would be, I guess, before Mr. Prokop spoke, I thought of those two items and I thought, well, canopy, you know, I'm not sure that's really a necessity and I really couldn't remember how many even existed in the county for that type of situation. So for my thought on that one was that, you know, if you didn't have the money, I don't really see where it's at, that big a deal. I think the elevation thing is a little bit. It's certainly the, the first building had a nicer look to it with that, but I still, personally, I don't know that I would force, force it, if it had come in without either of those two, because they knew the budget would be such in the beginning. I don't know that we would have asked them to add those things or change any of those things. So I don't know that I'd be, I'm okay if they, if they think they can tell there the elevation, but I certainly wouldn't worry about.
Canopies might not seem that expensive when we, the school gets sued for someone slipping and falling on a wet or icy sidewalk and breaking their leg. I, I would like the canopy. I mean, I can think of, I mean, when I sort of look at elementary schools and at least where I grew up and even once I've been by, it's just sort of natural that there's a covered area for the students to be walking in and out of the school. And this sort of offers none of that. So I don't know. I mean, I, yeah.
Everybody's aware there, there, we didn't remove all the canopies. There is a covered area that wraps around the main entrance and the parent drop-off. Those are covered and there's also, the special ed entrance is also has a, has a covering. We just, we didn't run the canopy all along the whole sidewalk, which is, you know, what we showed originally was unusual. I don't know that we have another canopy that would have been that long anywhere else in the system. And most middle schools and high schools actually don't have canopies. If they're within a mile. Well, it was, you know, it would have been nice if we could have afforded it. I just want everyone to know that there are still covered areas for students entering the building. To the extent that was.
And I, I wonder too, I question, you know, there was talk about this phasing it in later. I mean, I'm looking, looking at the first design, it appears that the canopy, sort of the structural foundation is in sort of like a grass area, dirt. And then the new design is all concrete. So like, why not just keep the original design, which has the grassy area and sort of the sidewalks, which would seem to me easier to add the canopy at a later date versus now it's all concrete. And yeah, you have to dig all of that up and tear it out and bring it back. So I kind of question the, you know, well, it'd be too hard to put it in. Well, like, yeah, it would be if it's all concrete like you have now, but before you had grass there. You know, but I've never built a canopy, so I guess I couldn't really comment on how hard or easy it is, but it would look, it would look easier to me with grass than it would just all concrete. Not to mention, you know, I have, having been on the commission for a while now, we're sort of anti-concrete and pro-grass, right? And so now we've just filled like an open grassy area with just concrete, you know? So in fact, it'd probably be cheaper just to keep the grass and not have the concrete, right? So yeah, just a couple of other comments from me.
And, and just to, just to be clear, the, the reason we put the, the canopies in was because we do think that they have, they do play a role and they, they do provide a certain, you know, a certain comfort level for the students and the staff. So, so we don't, we don't remove them, you know, lightly. And, and also, you know, when it comes to, you know, our responsibility doesn't begin and end where the canopy is. We have to clear our parking lots, our sidewalks, anywhere people lay a foot. So our, our liability really doesn't change very much with, with the, with the removal.
Other questions, comments, folks? I mean, it sounds like the issue here is whether or not we're, you know, it sounds like all the other conditions. The applicant says we're fine with, there's, there's no issue there. So now we're making a decision about whether or not we're asking for a canopy or not. So I guess, are we asking for a canopy or not is the question that we have to answer.
Well, and I, I think there was also some architectural elements and
But I think they said they were, they were good with that, right? Didn't they say sort of the elevations, there was no issues with that?
Well, I, I think we could, I think with the elevations, we could at least provide some ideas. Our architect who's on the, on the call tonight can, could, could describe some of them to you if that would, if that would help, what some of those ideas would be. But we could, you know, try to provide something that, that fits, you know, both the, both the intent and the, and the budget that we're, that we're dealt with. So.
I, I guess one of my thoughts is that, you know, I do think there's some concerns about some of what's been ripped, you know, and I understand what you were doing from an instructional basis, you know, but from our standpoint, as the city of Westminster and as a planning and zoning commission, we are concerned about the outside, okay? And, and obviously you can't look at those two elevations and they're, they're not, they're different. They, they are significantly different. And it's a concern of ours. The last thing we want to do is hold you all up as far as being able to start construction. We don't want to get lost in the weeds with that. But, you know, I, I think that the goal here tonight should be able to get you the approval that you need, that you can move forward. But I, I do sense that there's a little bit of concern from our end on some of the architectural elements that have been changed. And if we issued this conditional approval and you all came back to us a month from now and said, hey, we explored this. This is our ideas for improving this slightly. You know, we can remove, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, someone on staff, correct me. But, you know, we could remove a condition, like if we decide at the end of the day, okay, let's forget the canopies. You're going to do more of a grassy area with some additional trees there that maybe provide shading. I don't know. I'm just throwing things out. I don't think we're going to solve all that tonight. But maybe working with staff to try to kind of get to a happy medium here that works for everybody. You get your approval, you can move forward and we kind of come back to revisit the fine tuning that may need to be, you know, necessary here. That's my thought based on what I'm kind of hearing so far from our members is the idea to, to kind of keep everything moving forward, make everybody happy. But also maybe address some of the concerns that, that we have from an architectural or design standpoint. Please interject somebody else on what you thought about that. So.
Well, I was, I was just going to say, one of the things that if the commission wants, you know, to add, you know, instead maybe to modify a condition would be that, you know, that we just work together for the staff level and the, and the architect, you know, to come up with something that we feel would meet the design preference manual. You know, if, if it's not something that you wanted to feel comfortable adding as a condition for them to have to come back to you guys, it just totally depends on what your comfort level is.
I gotta, I gotta be honest. I actually prefer the redesign over the old design. To be perfectly honest with you. And I mean, I get the elevation, but like, I think, I think the redesign looks, I mean, yes, we're kind of anti like boxes, like we don't want boxed buildings, but like I, from the redesigned picture, there looks to be some like texture and elements to it that don't bother me so much. I think I do like the canopy and I'm a fan of, of that. So, but yeah, I agree with you, Dan. I think we can give the, let's get a way to, you know, not hold them up over something like these conditions, but at least, you know, continue to have that conversation. So, but I, I like the redesign, but I would prefer to have the canopies there as well. So.
We, yeah, we, we have no problem. I, I like this suggestion of working with staff. We can, certainly that's, that's doable.
I agree with Ross.
You should come back and show us, you know, give us the report at some point in time.
Miss Bigdolti, you're going to say something?
I agree with Ross. I, I like the new design of the building better. It looks a little more modern and I think.
I'm having, I'm having trouble hearing Lindy Ross, if you could do for a minute because the background was.
I like the, I like the new design better than the older design. I think it looks more contemporary. And I think the two parts of the building look like they go together better. And, and I do like the canopy. I don't know about getting money for the canopy, but I, I do like the canopy. I, I think, and I think it, it gives a good look to the building. I think it adds, if you have the plainness of the building and that canopy swooping around, it makes, gives it a good look.
Not to mention, there's, there's sort of like your structure, right? There's the building and then here's the canopy. So now you have your, you've sort of have your layers in it, like breaking it up, right? So as opposed to like no canopy and yes, you are kind of just staring at a square building right now. So yeah, but I guess to make a decision here, Dan or Councilor Huff, do you have sort of a, could you help us with a proposal of what we should be, you know, putting forward to here?
Andrea, what, what do you think the direction we should go here? I, I kind of, I want them to get their approval so we can kind of move forward. I, I do sense from the commission, there's a little bit of concern on some of the architectural elements. But I don't think we're going to figure that all out tonight because I think that's a lot of technical stuff and needs to be worked on, on a staff level and simply maybe come back to us at some point to kind of address what has been worked out on the staff level for us to, you know, say, you know, so I, I don't know how we want to design the condition. I don't know whether we want to say specifically, you know, four and five as much as maybe saying that four being that the, you know, on a staff level, you all work on trying to do something to, you know, economically, maybe improve the elevation with canopy in mind and kind of see what can be worked out from that standpoint. Because they need their approval. We don't want to hold them up. We don't want, you know, we want them to be able to get, move forward. And I think all these problems are, I think we can solve them, you know?
So my, my recommendation or my suggestion would to keep, you know, one, two and three. As, you know, we've discussed that either these things are already in the process or the Board of Education is okay moving forward, you know, with those things. I do think that a fourth condition could just be to, for city staff and Board of Education to continue the talks about architectural features. Once again, keeping the canopy in mind as we move forward. And to just try to figure out a compromise. We could come back to you, you know, once that is, you know, once we decide on something. But if that wouldn't hold up, I don't think that would hold up any approvals or, you know, the conditional approval, once the Mylar, once those comments are addressed, number one is addressed. The Mylars can move forward. We can, I just don't think that that, anything's going to hold this up. You know, if, if we keep it kind of in the confines of one, two, three and four, with the four being continue the conversations that need to happen on the staff level between staff and Board of Education to create a compromise.
And not make it so specific. Does that sound good on us, from the school system standpoint, what we're suggesting?
Yes, I, I think we can, yeah, we can certainly work with that.
That makes it vague enough and open enough that you guys can kind of work behind the scenes to kind of come up with something that everybody's happy with.
Yes, I, I think that's, that's, yes, I, I think we can do that. Our staff has been working together as, as Andrea said, and, and I think we can, we can, we can manage, you know, manage the, the way the, the language is being proposed. We can manage that.
Well, I don't know how to put, how do we put it into a phrase here? What do we want to say?
Well, I, I say that we make a motion to i- issue conditional approval based off of item, what I'm seeing on the screen, what, under recommendations. Item one, two and three as written. And Andrea, item four would be that the, this, the staff of the school system and the city of Westminster, we continue to work together to see what elevation changes they could make to improve the overall design, keeping in mind the desire for, you know, a canopy. You can clean up what I'm saying. Thank you. With, with the intent that you would report back to us, you know, within the next, you know, month. But the goal is to find a workable solution for both parties. Someone can put that, I think staff can work on putting that into a reasonable form. It is recorded.
Sure. Is, is there a second?
Can I just say one thing prior?
Sure.
Because these things are not, and this is just a suggestion as I'm thinking of it. Because these architectural features are something that will obviously be happening farther down the road, I, I am just asking more than a month to come back before you. You know, with, with those conversations, basically also because if there are any additional conversations, you know, let's just say it's a very, very minute amount of extra money that would be needed for something and the Board of Education is like, we just, you know, we're just going to give it to our board, you know, for them to hear what, anything that's being proposed. I wouldn't want it to be something that we run into an issue because it wasn't within a month. So I just wanted to.
Okay. What are you suggesting, Andrea?
I mean, maybe three.
Okay.
The Board of Education guys, do you think that that would be okay? That, you know, I think that we can continue these conversations. I just want to make sure that that doesn't put a constraint on you guys to make it to your board if, you know, if need be for, just to talk and have conversations.
Yes, I, I, I think that's reasonable. We, we have quite a bit going on right now. And so we do need a little time to, to switch gears, to, to reconsider this. And also it, you know, as a courtesy to our board, we certainly would want to make sure that, that, that they know what's going on and they're in agreement with, depending on, on where this, where it goes. So we do have to keep them in the loop and they have a regular, you know, a monthly meeting. So my, my ability to get them information is regulated. So, so yeah, we, it, it's not something that we can, that we're going to need that extra, extra bit of time with.
Great. Any other comments from the commission? I'll second Councilman Hoff's draft proposal. They're all in favor? Aye.
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 Great. Thanks, guys.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it. And I appreciate the pinstripe shirt I saw earlier. So. Thanks, everyone.
Okay. I think the next item is the county liaison report. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, you are correct.
Ms. Weber.
Good evening, everybody. Just some quick updates. We are still going through the residential text with the planning commission. If all goes well, we are going to forward the, their recommendations to the county commissioners at their business meeting on the twenty first. The text as well as the two mapping rezonings will be forwarded to the county commissioners for discussion, work sessions and at a public hearing to be determined the date. Next, we have the water and sewer amendment. Again, if all goes as planned, my colleague Price Wagner will be presenting that to you all next month at your October meeting. And then also with water and sewer, we are in the beginning stages of the triennial update, which takes place every three years, updating the water and sewer master plan. I believe Price Wagner will be in touch again with staff in the coming weeks. And then lastly, the transportation master plan. We are working on a second survey to get further responses from the citizens of Carroll County. And that is going to be put out in the coming weeks, coming months. And that's it for me if there's no questions.
Any questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Weber. All right, moving on. Nothing under old business, no informational items. Planning Commission, Public Commerce, Sustainable Maryland, Green Team, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, since two thousand fifteen, I've been in discussion with Sustainable Maryland, which is, they are located as in the Environmental Finance Center at the University of Maryland. It seems like now in the city, there's a lot more support for making Westminster a sustainable Maryland certified city. And in one of the actions required to become a sustainable Maryland certified city is a creation of a green team. Yes, last, yesterday evening, I mentioned something to the tree commission about this and I wanted to bring it to the planning and zoning commissions. Just to see if any of you, I don't need an answer right now, but if any one member of the planning and zoning commission would like to volunteer to be on the green team. So we can move forward with our certification for Sustainable Maryland.
What exactly does the green team do again, Andrew?
That's what I was going to ask.
I, I can, I can send you all some information on that. The green team, basically it's, it's, it's a group that tries to put objectives forward. Sustainable objectives forward for the city and to keep, to keep track of that. So for instance, to become a sustainable Maryland certified city, I think you need a hundred and fifty points. From my calculations, we're well over that, but the green team is really a group of people that come together to make sure we're pushing the, the sustainable goals of the city together forward.
Is it environmental? Is that what it is?
Yes. Yep.
Are these making recommendations or they, they don't have any, you know, quote authority besides making recommendations? Is that correct?
And with that, Councilmember Huff, not a hundred percent certain on that. I can definitely get back in touch with you about that. Yeah, I mean, I, I'll, I can get back in touch with you.
Something I, I personally, the councilperson will.
I only want to be on the green team if I have power, Andrew. Okay. That's all I care about. I don't have any power. I, I need some power. Need more power. Okay. All right. Anything else, Mr. Gray?
None for me, Mr. Chair.
All right. People will submit their applications to the green team in a timely manner. Anything else from anyone on the commission before I ask to adjourn the meeting? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn. Second, meeting adjourned. Have a great evening, guys.